I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everybody. Welcome. Good to see a crowd here. First item up, we will approve the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as posted and sent to the news media 24 hours prior to the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Greifey, second by Mr. Palmer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, I'd like to share the leadership statement. The city of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism, trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meeting, we expect that all participants will act in a respectful manner and consistent with these principles. Thank you. Next, we have the council workshop report from October 20th. I'm not going to read that for obvious reasons, but it is available online if anybody would like to review that. And then we'll move over to the public comment. If anybody's got any public comment this evening. Just state your name. We're going to allow about three to five minutes, please.
Council members, Matthew Johnson. Of course, you guys know. Say, I just want to let you guys know, we recently got a dog. We live out in the country. We plan on registering it with the city of Hampton because my parents could be watching the dog, and it's going to be in the city of Hampton. So we plan on registering it, okay? I'm not going to take up too much more of your guys' time. As soon as I say what I have to say, I'm going to be out. Second of all, I want to thank the city of the Hampton Police Department because, why am I here? Another dog incident. Pretty sure you guys are aware. Yep. They did an excellent job responding to it. I would, you know, after every meeting, I've talked with you guys individually, and I've appreciated what every one of you has said. But it comes back to the fact is when this incident happened, I was shaken up pretty good. It was close. It was a close call again, okay? Close call, again. Anyways, at first I was shaken up, then I calmed down. Supervisor came out, and I got maybe a little bit more relaxed. But you know what? After that, I was angry. And it's because of what I've heard. If any of you can tell me what would possess a dog to charge at me unprovoked from 30 yards away, I'd like to hear it. All right, thank you. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your answer.
Any other public comment this evening?
Hi there. So I didn't know there was a time limit of three to five minutes prior to coming here, so I might take a little bit more time than that.
Yeah, well, we're going to try and keep it moving, so that's just the way it is.
I guess, first of all, I guess I'm going to have to kind of look through here real quick to see what I'm going to make points on. I guess I just want to remind the council of what you're voting for tonight. And tonight, what you're voting for is for my exception of chickens on 2.5 acres. We are not here voting tonight on changing the city ordinance. The way the city ordinance was written was you could have an exception. Years ago, obviously, the city and citizens and the council had come to an agreement to have horses south of town and to have sheep east of town, okay? So at some point, that there was an exception made for those people. I know some of the city council members have gotten comments from city residents saying they don't want chickens. Fine, they don't want chickens. This room should be absolutely full of those people saying they don't want chickens. And you know what also is if people want the ordinance that they want chickens, this room should also be full of people saying they want chickens. And guess what? They're not showing up. They're not showing up. You have three people, two, that have been here regularly saying, "We want chickens on our 2.5 acres or more. We want an exception. I'm requesting an exception based on how the city council ordinance is currently written." And if you can't see just that small thing and not look at the big picture of what we're going to run into, I'm willing to work with you guys if you vote yes. Being a chicken owner, I'm willing to work with you to maybe write up some guidelines of if you were to approve. Based on the ordinances that I've looked at, we meet those guidelines, all right? A friend even said to me today, "Westington DC allows chickens." Come on, you guys. We're in rural Hampton, Iowa, okay? To me, this is something that should be considered. I'm willing to compromise to not free-range my chickens. I'm asking for a compromise for you guys, okay? That's what I'm asking for. And then we figure it out. I want to read my proposal because it has changed a little bit from when this first started so that not only you guys know it, but I want the people of Hampton to know what I am proposing, all right? We have eight chickens. We have no plans to get more chickens. Once these chickens are gone, we are done with chickens. And in all reality, when these chickens are done with their lifespan of laying eggs, we may get rid of them, so it could be sooner. Our setup of a coop and living space is well-built. They have very well insulated coop for colder temps and where they roost at night are size sufficient for eight chickens. They also have a sturdy-built outdoor coop area where they get fresh air during the day. We provide our chickens as good caretakers. I believe our chickens should have natural habitat similar to free-range so they can eat bugs and dust their feathers, and therefore, we plan to make a portable chicken run where they will still be caged and have access to move around our backyard of 2.5 acres, all right? I'm not asking for chickens to run over to my neighbor's yard. That's not what I'm asking for, okay? And I know the council, I hope that you all got this letter and that you all took time to read it. And I also want to ask if you all, if Ron sent out those notes from the, this Christine Stone from Allers Law Firm that Ron had confided in, he was going to send those out. And I hope that you guys read those because there's a lot of pertinent information in there that I'm not sure why wasn't brought up at the beginning of the meeting the other night. Because that information could have changed a lot of discussion the other night, all right? My proposal is to accept our request as a written exception to the current city code. This covers step one, then move forward with laying out rules, requirements, when if the council makes exceptions to others. This could be as black and white or as vague as you want it, as long as the enforcement is protected. I would be willing to help create this, blah, blah, blah. I know the council, I'm trying to hurry, has already seen this. By doing it this way, from what I understand, the actual city ordinance would not have to be changed. You would just be adding a list of requirements for us to follow, all right, which I am willing to do. One other thing that I want to say, there's a lot that I could say. There really is. We've spent a lot of times talking about chickens. I'm going to say one more thing.
Can I just stop you for just a second?
Yeah.
I'm not going to just let you go because I enjoy, you know, I enjoy. Reserve, deserve your right to speak. We're actually on the, your, your...
Okay.
Permission for the chickens is actually on the agenda at a later time, so, but, you know.
So I can't speak on it?
Yeah, you can keep on. I just want to let you know that it is on the agenda.
Oh, to read my letter?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. If I would have known that right away, I would have said all this other stuff I wanted to say. Darn it. Can we back up?
I read everything they said to me.
Darn it. Okay. Also, FYI, chickens roost at night and can easily be caught at night, okay? So with all these chickens running around town, let them roost, go in and get them. If those people have not gone through this process that I have done and that Sarah is doing, let them roost, go in and get those chickens. It's going to save our law enforcement a lot of time that you guys are concerned about, a lot, all right? Say yes to us, set some guidelines, go in, enforce those people who have not followed this procedure. Chicken's done, taken care of in Hampton. Like I said, I really, really doubt many people are going to come forward and ask for this exception like what we're asking, okay? I'm asking for a yes vote, and I know that there's a lot of people listening right now and are in support of that as well, so. I wish I could talk more because I've got a lot to say even about how some of this has been handled, but thank you.
Well, for you, I'm going to get to that if you need some more. I'll give you some more time. All right, thank you. Anybody else? The chickens?
Yes.
Do you want to save it for when we do yours?
No, I'm not reading my letter. If the council's going to be reading the letter I submitted yesterday, then I'll allow the council to read that during my time. This is just a public comment about the overall discussions that we've been having over the last weeks before we get to that portion of the agenda tonight. Members of the city council, residents of Hampton who are watching this evening, tonight marks an important moment for our town and sets a precedent for the future city council members and residents of Hampton. Tonight, residents of Hampton will look to their city leaders and determine what kind of leaders them to be. Tonight, three residents of Hampton, using a pre-established ordinance allowing us to petition the city council for special consent regarding our acreage properties on the rural south side of town, will learn whether or not their voices are heard, really heard. I won't rehash all the specifics of tonight's vote, but will once again plead to the council to hear what I say now, just as I have been saying, we all have been saying from the very beginning. We are not asking the council to recognize, we are not asking the council to reconsider zoning law 2.6 pertaining to R1 properties about livestock in the city of Hampton. We are asking the council to utilize the already pre-established ordinance 55.05 set forth by the previous city leaders that foresaw special exceptions to the R1 zoning law made because special exceptions within the city of Hampton exist. And I am asking on behalf of myself and my family that we be granted that special exemption based on the documentation presented over the last several weeks. Should we have petitioned the city prior to owning chickens? Yes. Should we have broken the rules? No. But it is no different than those, but it is no different than those who have had chickens within city limits in the past, except we are not keeping ours in the basement, and we actually have the space to keep them. Or we have not broken the rules about, you know, or we're no different than the people who are keeping dogs in town without license. And I am willing to accept the fine for having chickens before coming before the council and having, and before having the chickens. But we also did what all those others did not. We came to the council, we wrote our petitions, we found the law that supports our request, and we want to work together with the city so not only do we submit what we are requesting, but are also asking the council, what would you like us to do to make this happen? What is reasonable? Those of us who have come forward to petition the council for an exemption have extended the olive branch to the city council to work together so everyone can be appeased. This does not have to be a win-lose scenario. This can be a moment where the citizens can see that our city and its leaders are willing and able to work with its residents to come to a mutual understanding and agreement, where personal feelings, beliefs, and opinions are set aside, and law, facts, and common sense can rise to the occasion to benefit everyone. We, the citizens, have the law on our side to request this special exemption of our city council. We have been supporting facts that backyard chickens are a common practice throughout Iowa and over all the United States, that many of our neighboring communities such as Mason City, Iowa Falls, Latimer, and Sheffield either support and/or allow special exemptions to backyard chickens within reason and special guidance, and the fact that there are varying amount of time that chickens have been residing on the three petitioned properties, that not once was a noise complaint, smell complaint, blight complaint, nuisance complaint, animal at large, or any other issue has been raised in the maximum four years that chickens have been kept between the three properties with either the police department or sheriff's department. And common sense dictates that if anyone were to stand at my property at 1621 40th Street, that our six cooped-up hen chickens would not and would not have any direct negative impact on the entire city of Hampton. That our three acres on the south side of town off a dusty county road is that special exemption that our previous leaders were considering all those years ago. Because if we are not the exception, who is? So please, please hear what I am saying, what we are saying. Take our individual petitions as they are and not with the whole of Hampton, and grant us our exceptions based on special case. Take hold of our extended olive branch to work with us to make the relationship faith and trust between the city and her citizens stronger by working together to develop guidelines that current and future leaders of our city government and citizens of Hampton can use so we are all better equipped down the road the next time a citizen uses the given right to come before the council. But today, in the here and now, given what we are asking and the avenues in which we seek it, I cannot see a justified reason for these requests to be denied. This has never been about making new rules, and this has never been black and white. There was always a gray area in the R1 zoning law because our previous leaders saw that and accommodated for it. Tonight's vote does not need to be you versus us. It does not need to be your beliefs versus my beliefs. I think there's enough division amongst us as American citizens on this country as a whole. And it is utterly exhausting. Now more than ever do we need a community that stands together. It is about what the law permits and if the city of Hampton council members are willing to take hold of our offers of olive branches and compromise of the proposals we submitted and are willing to pave this uncharted territory for the city of Hampton and its citizens. Be the leaders we need you to be and show us that we can come to you in good faith and that we will be heard fairly and openly. And not just in this matter, but in all future matters that we come to you before. And to the city council members who have supported us from the very beginning, thank you very much. And those city council members who were not with us from the very beginning but have heard us and are willing to speak with us and compromise, thank you. We appreciate that, and that is all we ask.
Thank you. All right, anybody else with public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. We don't have any public hearings. We have no old business this evening. We'll move on to our new business. First item on here is the consider awarding the October 25 image of pride to Marv and Carol Crock. Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, thank you. Tonight, I'm making a motion to submit the name and the home of Marv and Carol Crock as our image of pride recipient for October. Marv and Carol have lived in the home in Windsor Boulevard since 1968. Pride is defined by a feeling of deep pleasure or satisfaction derived from one's own achievements. To this, I feel there's no one in Hampton with more pride in the appearance of their home than the Crocks. Marv doesn't simply mow the lawn. He manicures it. He also mows a strip of lawn that is the city's portion for as long as they live there as well, and we certainly thank him for that. We also want to thank them for keeping watch over the back of their home as well. It's next to the city property in the park back there. Whenever the city grounds or lights need attention or fixed, Marv is on the phone to get the issues taken care of. Both Marv and Carol keep tabs on the goings-on in the neighborhood as well, and that is much appreciated. So with that, I'm proud to nominate the Crocks' home as this month's image of pride recipient.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Palmer to award the Crocks with the image of pride. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Davies. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Picture time. Thank you. Appreciate what you're doing over there.
You bet.
Oh, you keep an eye on those people, too. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. We'll move on to our next item. We need a request for a street closure from Alyssa Van Wert. I don't know if she's here tonight, but she did, we did get her maps and stuff on Monday. I don't know if anybody has any further discussion on that. I think we was kind of, it has what it was, same as it was last year, and everything worked out really well. So they're just requesting the same closures for Saturday, October 25th, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the street closure.
I would second.
Motion by Mr. Lamos. Second by Mr. Holmstrom to approve the street closure for the Halloween Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we got the, we need to consider the change order for the 2025-2026 street rehab report program and the amount of $7,385. Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. This is a change order for the 2025-2026 HMA rehabilitation program. This change order includes some additional work the contractor had to do when they encountered some soft subgrade throughout the course of the project. It involved excavating out that soft kind of mucky material and bringing in rock to bring that area back up to grade so they could place their asphalt overlay and/or their full-depth patch. So the first item here is the approval of this or the consideration of this change order incorporating into the project.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order.
I've got an ocean for Mr. Lamos to go and approve the change order for the 2025-26 rehab.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Greifey. All right, any further discussion?
What, what street was that on?
It was on two streets. It was on Federal and on Sixth.
All right. Any other discussion? Then we'd put that into a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. And we'll keep the Mark Show going because the next item is for the pay request, number one, for Heartland Asphalt.
Thank you again. This is pay request number one. This will be the only pay request on the project. They have completed all the work on it. As a quick reminder, the contract amount for this project was $288,000, and this pay request is for $250,000 and a little more. But again, this is the only pay request for the project. The project came in approximately $25,000 under the contract amount. The total cost completed was $263,000. So this pays all of the work completed except the retainage. That's on the next item, but that retainage amount is $13,000. So that's the difference between the work completed of $263 and this pay estimate of $250,000.
If there's any other discussion, otherwise I'd entertain a motion to approve Heartland as per pay request number one.
Make a motion to approve pay estimate number one.
Yeah, low, low motion by Mr. Lamos, second by Mr. Davies. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to the next item. The Mark Crawford show continues. This is for the retainage. We retained it to the amount of $13,171.63.
This is for the formal acceptance of the project. Again, all the work is completed. The project came in about $25,000 under the contractor's bid amount. So this, following this action, then the 30-day clock will start, and at the end of that 30-day clock, the city can release the retainage. As the mayor stated, it was in the amount of $13,171.63.
All right.
That will final out the project.
Yep. So I'd entertain a motion to approve the 2025-2026 tree, street rehab program and release of retainage no sooner than for 30 years, 30 days.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Holmstrom. Second by Ms. Rhodey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Next, we have, we acknowledge the receipt of the fiscal year 2025 street finance report. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an annual report that's due to the state on December 1st. It's a street finance report. It's basically an accounting of the road use tax fund. Page one is expenses. Page two is continued expenses. Page three is revenue. Four is bond, which there isn't a bond. And then five is equipment list. They keep an inventory. And then page seven is the summary page. All this information is included in the annual financial report, which we submit to the state, too, but for some reason, they like the street finance report separated out, and so we do it. Any questions?
Hearing any. Basically, we just need to have a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the fiscal year 2025 street finance report.
So moved.
By Mr. Palmer.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Lamos. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, moving on. First item, next item is the request, consider the request for chickens on the property owned by, how do I go with Butch Grokey? And Jennifer at 1,004th Street Southeast. Mr. Dunn, did you have any more information for that?
No, you have your original, their original packet, and then the, their updated letter from October 22nd.
So any further discussion at this point before we put this to a vote?
Of course, of course.
Ms. Greifey?
No matter how we vote tonight, our ordinance may have to change it or it's going to have to be amended. I have done some research, more research today. Urban chickens is not a new trend. It started back in the... Urban chickens is not a new trend. It started back in the sixties and seventies, thank you, hippies, and has been a significant growth in the last few decades. So I don't believe it's a fad that's going to fade away. Countrywide, there are groups organizing and, um, approaching their city councils to change the chicken ordinance laws, and they are overturning some. Looking in some of the bigger urban areas, New York, Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, Denver, Portland, Portland, LA, Detroit, Miami, they all allow chickens. And I'm thinking with since, in such densely populated, populated areas, if they're able to manage the chickens, um, and everybody can live together happily with that, I, I don't know why Hampton would not be able to do that. That being said, if we say, yes, keep your chickens, then we do need to go and amend our ordinance. We do need to add some restrictions because the next person's gonna come to us, and the next, and the next, and we have to be prepared for that. So I'm not sure I'm prepared to blindly say, yes, keep your chickens. I'm not sure I'm prepared to say, no, no chickens. So I don't know where we move forward from here, but I think we need to work more.
Yeah, I think tonight, we do have a, we do have a work, more work to do. Tonight, we're just saying, yes, you can keep your chickens on your property as it is right now. We will be moving forward probably in two weeks on the next workshop, and we will be putting together an ordinance, um, as quickly as we can. And I will, I will be open, I'm looking for you guys, for the council, to bring me ideas, bring us ideas on what you want. I know you've done a lot of work on it, Jerry. Mr. Dunn brought up, sent over the, uh, all of the codes for the state of Iowa, you know, so that you guys all have them, so that you can, you know, look through them. What do you gotta do? What do you want? What do we want in Hampton, if we want it in Hampton? So tonight, we're saying, you know, can you have your chickens? Yes or no? Is where we're at today.
I have another little something to throw in there, though. If we say yes, can we also say, but you cannot increase your brood during this period? I mean, you can't bring in more. We're happy with what you got and, you know, because we do have one that has twenty chickens.
Right, right now, we, right now, we can't say that. Not on, not on this one.
All right.
This is the request to have chickens, and like I said, then our next, uh, thing that we need to do is get that ordinance as quickly as possible so that we can place the controls on them.
So there's no comment about free range or anything like that that we can make tonight? It's just yes or no?
Well, through free range, that's kind of a different animal. It's, if your animals are, are at large, at large, and there's, there's an ordinance for that.
Well, right now, um, chickens don't like cold weather, so there's no at-large right now because they're all cooped up. I move to approve the request for chickens on the property of Butch and Jennifer Groky.
So we got a motion by Mr. Palmer to approve the request.
Are we gonna have some more discussion on this?
Yes, yep. I entertain a second for that one.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Greifey. All right, more, more discussion.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Can we put a time limit on that as a part of this?
Yes, you can.
We can.
Like, in my opinion, I'm, I would be in favor of it if we can put a time limit on it, whether that's a year, whatever. I would like a time limit on it.
I'd be willing to amend my motion to one year.
Okay. So we got a motion to approve the request for chickens for a period of one year while we work through this.
Jerry, you okay with seconding that amendment?
Yes, yes.
And Jerry's got the second on that one. Any other?
I, uh, I know this compares to ha- having a dog, vicious dog hearing because emotions are running so high, and i- it's not an easy decision if you tell somebody they gotta put their dog down or get rid of it. Uh, and it's not us versus you or we versus they issue. I just, I'm just gonna vote the way people have contacted me and said, no chickens.
Mr. Holmstrom, did you have some information?
I did. Just as a remainder, a reminder, excuse me. Section fifty-five point oh-five in Hampton ordinance states livestock, which includes poultry, it is unlawful for person to keep livestock within the city except by written consent by the council or accept in compliance with the city's zoning regulations. Article six of our zoning regulation says, single-family residential R-one district, two-point-six states no raising or pasteurizing of livestock, poultry, or other commercial domestic animals or birds. The council has been approached by Jennifer Groky, Sarah Cole, and Mary Rodriguez, each asking for an exception to allow the raising of chickens within the Hampton city limits. They have expressed their own individual qualifications for requesting such an exception, the location of their property, the size of their property, the type and care that they can provide the animals, the quality of life these animals could provide their families. Each of these individuals have presented their views as to why the exception should be granted. The council has given them more than ample time to present their cases. The council has listened, listened. The council has investig- investigated the pros and cons of such an exception would mean to the city of Hampton, and are now faced with making this decision. We can vote yes to request, we can vote no to the request, or we can kick this issue down the road by providing temporary exceptions and addressing the situation at a later time. While it may be interesting to hear how other cities are handling this situation, we need to remember, this is our city. This is Hampton, Iowa. It is not, nor it ever will be, Des Moines or Iowa City, Ames, Ankeny, Davenport, et cetera, as some have used for comparison. It may be true that home-raised chickens may be growing, a growing phenomenon, and may be making its way into the community such as ours. However, we also need to be cognizant and remember that there is also a growing phenomenon of criminal behavior in each city, including Hampton, that has to deal with, we have to deal with each and every day. It is the resources of Hampton which we need to, need to be monitored. It is our resources that we need to prioritize. The resources of Hampton are limited. We need to utilize our limited resources to protect our citizens, our livelihood, our children, and their property to the best of our ability. I believe that a decision should be made tonight on this issue, and this issue should be put to rest. We could kick this can down the road and make an exhausting list of regulations which it, if fulfilled, would allow poultry to be raised within the city limits of Hampton. But the question is, who's gonna monitor these new poultry restrictions? Are they being properly followed? We simply do not have these resources. We do not assign our staff to investigate these new regulations. If, if we do assign our staff to investigate these new regulations, what will we be leaving unregulated in its place? Although all three applicants for this request have violated the city ordinance by not requesting this exception prior to their purchasing and raising chickens, they have owned up to this and have asked for a pardon. All three have documented and drafted a compelling letter for the effort to persuade the council to grant their individual request. Based on this, I would recommend an exception be made to each of them at their properties addressed in their request with the following stipulations attached to the exception. And I'll just read the one that I have for Jennifer Groky. Because of your location away from any close neighbor, the size of your property, two-and-a-half acres approximately, the care in which you have documented, the coop, the insulation, the disposal of droppings, and your plan to make portable chicken run this spring, I would propose the following. That the request be granted based on the following stipulations. Number one, that you agree that you will no longer have free-range chickens allowed on your property, subject to ordinance fifty-five point fourteen, animals at large. That your flock will not be increased from your current number of eight chickens. That the same eight chickens natural, that when these same eight chickens' lives have naturally expired, they will not be replaced with another chicken. That once your flock has expired, your property, property will again be governed by Article six, single-family resident R-one district, which states no raising or pastoring of livestock, poultry, or other commercial domestic animals and birds. That's, that's my proposal.
Any other comments? Thoughts? Okay. Like, like we said, Bill, you know, we, tonight, we're either approve or we're gonna deny the chickens. The next, next meeting is gonna be the ordinance, probably the only thing on the agenda, but we need to, we can't put stipulation, stipulations on this tonight, though.
Well, I, I just have a question, Steve. Ron had read the letter from Christian Stone. She said we could have, possibly, it would be a good idea to possibly have three, um, possible restrictions on whatever we decide if it's a, if it's, if, if we don't settle it tonight. Is that, am I reading this wrong, Ron?
Well, it's possible to put restrictions on. She said either by resolution, preferably, though she recommends by ordinance. And so, but the thing is, we couldn't have a resolution on for tonight because I don't, don't know what you want in that, for stipulations, uh, and same goes for the ordinance.
So we can't, we can't, I can't, we can't, um, suggest that we will say yes if this and this happens? Is that what you're saying?
Well, not in this motion. I think you, she was stating that you can input a time li- limit on, which is what they proposed, and that's the motion that's on the floor. But then, and would be for one year is what the motion is. But then you can work, you know, at the next meeting or whenever the council decides to put together, uh, stipulations. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, um, I had a thought, but I lost it, but... So, any other discussion? Otherwise, we'll put this to a vote. Now, this is for the Groky property only. I think the, the other thing that I was gonna mention, Bill, um, I don't know that we want different stipulation, stipulations to each request that we get. I think we need to have the, the stipulations, this is what, if you want chickens, this is what you need to buy, but that's just my opinion. I don't, you know, we don't know where the ordinance is gonna end up.
Okay, well, just, just to be fair, just to be fair. And I know I just read the stipulation for Jennifer Groky, because that's who we're talking about, it's Jennifer and Butch. I have the same stipulations for the other two characters, um, applicants also, so, I mean.
Okay, perfect.
They, they were all the same.
That was just, that was all I was saying, yeah, perfect. Okay, so there's no other further discussion. We will put this to the vote. I'm gonna do this on a roll, roll call vote, um, so we can take care of, keep track of it. So this, the motion is by Mr. Palmer and second by Ms. Greifey to approve the request for chickens on property owned by Butch and Groky, and Jennifer Groky at one-thousand-fourth Street Southeast. Mr. Davies?
For a period of a year.
For a period of a year, yes.
I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Holmstrom?
For a period of a year, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Lamos?
Nay.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Ms. Greifey?
Aye.
Ms. Rhodey? A vote of four to three, your chickens are approved.
Four to two.
Four to, sorry. I have trouble digits, uh, four to two. Uh, it is approved for a year, and we will be working on the ordinance, and, and I'm sure we will be in, in touch with you while we're doing that. Technically, no. Yeah? Sure. Yeah, yeah. We'll, we'll, we'll be in touch. I'm sure of it. But right now, your chickens are appro- Okay, moving on. Requested for chickens and, on the property owned by Taylor and, and Sarah Cole at sixteen-twenty hundred-and-fortieth Street. Same situation with all, we're, we've done the... Any additional information?
I, I just have a question. It says on here chickens, livestock on property. It's just chickens, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I was told yesterday when I re-submitted my updated letter to leave livestock out, and I did, and I did do that.
Okay.
So my updated petition does have just chickens, no livestock.
Thank you.
Okay.
I move to, uh, approve that, same stipulations as we did with the Grokeys for one year.
That's a one year, yep, and we're removing the livestock from the, from the cold request. Sarah, second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Davies. Okay, we will do the, uh, roll call, we're gonna vote one more time. Ms. Rhodey? Ms. Greifey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Lamos?
Nay.
Mr. Holmstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Davies?
Yes.
Also with a vote of four to s- two, um, your chickens are approved. Thank you.
And I also sent me Olive Branch to help.
Mm-hmm. We will, we'll take it.
All right.
Trust me. Okay, next one is for chickens on the property owned by Maricela Rodriguez. I can't tell her last name, Maritella, Maritala. Ten thirteen Fourth Street Southeast. Is she not here? I think she's been to one, one workshop, so... Anybody, any discussion over this one?
I, I think on this one, Mayor, um, I, I would, I would make the same motion as I did for, for Groky's and for Cole. I'll put that out there right now. Probably part of the confusion maybe there is, is McSweeney's had a horse for thirty-five years, and she just probably saw, well, they had, they had livestock or a horse, um, I could have chickens, so I, I, I'm a little more, if I'm sympathetic to anybody, I'm sympathetic really to Mary because that property had a horse barn and a horse corral and a horse, and I have a hound. She just thought, okay, so... But I, like I said before, I would move, uh, to approve the, uh, exception for chickens for Maricela Rodriguez, Maritalia at, uh, ten oh thirteen Fourth Street Southeast, and give them one year as well.
All right, we have motion by Mr. Palmer to approve, uh, the request of chickens.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Davies. One more time. Any other further question, discussion, anything?
Can you read his stipulation again? I, is this the same proposal?
Same proposal, yep. Approve the chickens for a period of year.
I guess I have, the only question I have, I have a lot of questions, obviously, but the size of the flock was an issue. I thought. It's more than two-and-a-half times the number of chickens of the other two candidates.
I think, how many acres? They got several more acres, I believe, over there, too, but that will be, uh, addressed in the, in the, uh, ordinance, so, as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Okay, we'll put this for to the, to the vote. Mr. Lamos?
Nay.
Ms. Rhodey? Mr. Davies?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Holm- Holmstrom?
Nay.
Ms. Greifey?
Aye.
Vote is three to three. It is a tie. There is a tiebreaker broke. It would be me. And the only thing I'm gonna say is that, I think most people know my, my position on this. But also that the, the property owner has not been, other than the initial letter and meeting, they have not been around. They have not had shown the insurance that we show from the Kolbs and the Grolkis. So, and with that said, I'm gonna vote nay on that one. So that would be, would not be approved. All right?
Mayor, I, I don't want to debate that, but I, I don't know if that was a prerequisite for the discussion, if they had to, had to be here, so.
It probably doesn't.
But that's your role.
All right. Moving on. Next item, we're gonna play some bills and entertain a motion to approve the claims that submitted by staff in the amount of $368,624.33.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr., sorry, motion by Mr. Palmer, second by Ms. Greifey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have the ordinance 407. This is an ordinance amending section 6908 for the Hampton Municipal Code by adding subsections to the no parting, parking zones. Mr. Reddick.
Thank you, Mayor. This is proposed amendment section 69.08 Hampton Municipal Code is hereby amended by adding new subsections thereto as follows. Third Avenue Southeast on the north and south side from 3rd Street Southeast to 4th Street Southeast, as well as 3rd Street Southwest on the east side from Central Avenue West to 1st Avenue Southwest. I would also present, the council hall has a copy of this. This is a written statement by Dustin Halverson. He states he did not hear of changes until 10/22/25, proposed changes. I am Dustin Halverson. I live at 221 4th Street Southeast Hampton, Iowa. There is currently no parking on the north side of 3rd Avenue, half a block to the alley to Highway 65, directly in front of his residence. He says, "I use a truck and a trailer for work and my home does not accommodate parking for a truck and trailer combination, so I must use, I must use on, on street parking." If the parking on street is removed on the northwest half and the south 3rd to 4th Street is removed, it will be, I will be forced to park one and a half blocks northwest of my home for nearest parking on the street. Is there any way to do no parking on the south side of 3rd Avenue, half a block from alley to Highway 65 on the south side instead of the whole block from 3rd to 4th north and south? Dustin Halverson, 10/23/2025. He's proposing to allow a half a block parking on the north and, and south side of 3rd Avenue, from what I understand, unless anybody thinks that is different. So. He asked me to present that. As he could not be here, he couldn't get away from work, so. I would just turn it over to the mayor.
All right. So this is the sub, third and final reading of the, of the ordinance. This would be either approved if, if we take into consideration Mr. Halverson's changes. I would recommend that you do not approve the, the final third reading and that we move, we would need a new ordinance started for the no parking that he has suggested, so. Any further discussion?
The neighbors don't want him parking in front of their house. That's one thing. It's inconsiderate to park 35 feet of vehicle in front of your house and block the view. And the traffic issue, it's constantly, people are trying to dodge around that truck coming off Highway 65. Ron's got some pictures.
Yeah, I'll put them up.
The transit bus had to stop halfway in the intersection to let someone through.
There we go. This is one photo that Barry supplied. This is looking east, Barry?
Yep.
On 3rd Avenue?
Yep. He's got eight cars and two parked in the street.
This is his trailer here and pickup.
That silver car is his.
This one?
I don't know whose the other two are, but they're parked side by side.
This is his home.
There's a Amazon truck parked.
Right here.
Against the, going the wrong way in the no parking.
I did, for my permission.
Yeah, go ahead.
I did drive down in there today and I think that's a complimentary picture because that house is surrounded by cars. There were five cars parked.
This house?
Yes.
We did the same thing on 1st Street Northwest last year when the school buses and transit bus were having issues getting through that intersection. The whole one side, we put no parking on. And the other side was already no parking on that side. So this should be no different. And if he's gotta find a place to park his vehicle, maybe he should consider Tower Center or County Parking Lot or, there's a bunch of parking lots.
All right.
I have a, you know, if we, you know, if we pass this, is he just gonna, like I said, park, move it down a block?
I assume so.
Yeah.
Sounds like.
Yeah. He said he'd park on 3rd Street.
I mean, that's not doing anything for those neighbors.
He's gonna park somewhere else. It's just gonna open that street up.
Right. And, and the intersection on Highway 65. Which is more of a concern maybe than anything else.
Mayor, I think to Barry's point too, when we did 1st Street Northeast, that's wider than this street.
Northwest.
Northwest. It's wider than this street. And we still had restrictions on it. It's a more popular street, but, well, this 3rd Avenue's a through street.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's really busy.
I really, I think that picture makes the street look wider than it is.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And it is so much more congested down there. This was a good day.
It gets really bad at school time.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, I drove down there today too, Jerry, and yeah, you're right. There were a bunch of cars there. Both sides.
And so we're talking the whole block. Can you back that picture up to show where the end of the block is or is that where Barry's picture was? That's my windshield. Okay. Were you at the end of the block?
Here's a picture from Beacon.
Okay.
This is, this is what he's requesting, no parking on the east half here. And to allow parking here. Currently, it's no parking on the north side. Is that correct for half a block?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so the, the no parking for half a block, isn't that Red Square, correct?
That's what he's proposing.
That's what he wants right now.
So that he can park either here or here. Otherwise, he said he's gonna park over here.
Right now, all there is, no park, no parking on this side of the road.
Yeah.
They can park here.
Currently, yes.
So if we shave, do our, then that's gonna go all the way to the block. On both sides.
That's what this ordinance proposes.
Correct. I need some time, more. Otherwise, we'll just vote on it and we'll either, and then entertain a motion to approve the third and finally, final reading of ordinance 407.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 407.
Second by, motion by Mr. Lamos?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Greifey. This will be a roll call vote. Ms. Holm, Mr. Holmstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer's?
Nay.
Mr. Lamos?
Aye.
Mr. Davies?
Nay.
Ms. Rhodey?
Aye.
Ms. Greifey?
Aye.
With a vote of four to two, the final reading, third reading of ordinance 407 has been passed. Thank you. Next, I would entertain a motion to approve this consent agenda with the following items. Proceeding approving the previous minutes from October 9th, 2025. And we're scheduling the next session for November 13th, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM in the city council chambers. I have a motion.
So moved.
Ms. Greifey, a motion. Second by Ms. Rhodey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to our staff reports. Chief Morrison.
The only thing I have tonight is we spoke with Officer Bo Brest at the academy. He's doing well. He's excited to get back here and start working. He's about halfway done, so in December is when his graduation will be. So he hit that halfway mark and he was excited. Other than that, I'll entertain questions.
Oh, not hearing any.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Tar.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Got good news. We got the bridge approaches finished up there on 6th Street Northwest. Looks pretty good. So the redecking went well, new signage, looks like a brand new structure there. And we got the approaches poured. We will open that on Monday. We're gonna give it a few days to cure up. It's been cold. So even though we poured it with chloride and everything else today to do a quick set, that's kinda what our goal is. And then, I didn't get the trade board on the agenda for tonight and I wished I would have. It's my bad. But they have three more trees that they didn't have at, at the last meeting that have popped up. Just to give you guys a heads up on, and actually I've looked at all these areas. One of them is actually at the Aquatic Center and really, one of the newly planted trees in the last few years actually died, so they're just replacing the one that actually died where it, right where it was anyway, with something new. Then in East Park, there is a Thai borkading memorial tree and marker being planned. The Frisbee Golf Club, the, or Mr. Winters with Frisbee Golf has been talked to about that. And it isn't anywhere near a soccer field, so. And then the third one would be down by Harriman Park. As you know, on 19th Avenue, there's a big, long, skinny stretch where we took out just a ton of ash trees last year. It's not necessarily in the park, but it is in that strip between the creek and the, and the road. And I just wanted to give you guys a heads up on those. If you have an opinion on that, let me know. If we need a formal action, we'll put it on the next agenda if need, if you think we need to or what have you. So I did wanna bring it up tonight though, because I, I felt bad. I, it's been a busy week, guys. I apologize. So, anyway. Any other questions or concerns?
Where are we on the Frisbee Golf? Have they got just about done on that?
So the, the backstop, I think, is all out except for the post. We did get three of the bases put in. I think we have, I think there might be six more to go, if that many, but we're gonna keep working on them. Next week, we should be able to knock out most of it. So we're getting close.
And I think in the, in the trees, we weren't able to come to a consistent consensus tonight.
Right, yep. It's not on the agenda.
And I looked and, I mean, weather wise, I think we're okay getting them back and getting them into the ground, so we'll probably get that on our next.
Yep, and that'll be fine. I just wanted to give you guys the heads up on those, so. Just because it was, it's one of those things.
Right.
So.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Tar?
Thank you.
Sir. Mr. Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. So we will lift the burn ban for the month of November for yard waste only. And I'll just read out of chapter 105.08 regarding this matter. Yard waste means any debris such as grass, clippings, leaves, garden waste, brush and trees. Yard waste does not include stumps. Burning yard waste shall be limited to a 30-day time period starting November 1st. Burning during said 30 days shall only be allowed from 12 o'clock noon until darkness. Darkness being defined as when the streetlights come on. Burning yard waste shall not occur at a proximity of less than 20 feet from any structure or building and shall be supervised by a competent person at all times and shall not be left unattended until the fire is completely extinguished. That is chapter 105.08 and we'll have something on our website and people are welcome to call City Hall and, and get further details on that or check out our website. I don't have anything else unless anybody has any questions.
Question for Mr. Dunn. Not hearing any. Thanks, sir. Who wants to start? Mr. Davies?
Sure. I spoke with Adam Akers today. He's the Veterans Affairs Director for Franklin County. And we're gonna be going ahead next week and ordering the memorial bench to go into Skateboard Park. Enough money's been raised and that'll be paid for. That money's gone to the American Legion Post. That'll take care of that. So we'll be placing that order. And then I'd like to place on the future agenda whether you want workshop or the meeting to just give a report from the Design Committee of the Chamber where we're at with the Building Improvement Fund, just to update you where that money has been going. And then Halloween Howl is this Saturday. Come and visit the Haunted Theater from 3:00 to 5:00 and bring your own garlic, because the theme is vampires. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Holmstrom?
Well, I'd just like to say that normally, normally, I look very forward to the information shared by Councilman Davis and his code council message in the Hampton Chronicle. And I say that I appreciate his efforts to inform the community about the council proceedings and planning events and ordinances. And it has definitely been a resource that I have looked forward to as a new council person. And I'm sure the community appreciates it. But I have to say that I was disappointed in the article written on last night's paper, called Council foul play. Perhaps not disappointed with the article, just disappointed with the location of the article. I think his article should have been in its rightful place in letters, letters to the editor. Mr. Davis strayed from his format informing the community of Hampton City ordinances and stepped into the realm of expressing his own opinion and not how Hampton is governed or why, but into what other communities are doing. And then asking the community to contact the city with their opinions on the subject and listing the website to do so in the article. Not that this was in itself objectionable because the council needs to hear from the community to help with the decision-making process. But what I found interesting was that he has never, to my knowledge, asked input from the citizens in any of his other code council articles, which I can remember. And his searching for Google for the answers for the council inquiries, to me, is not the proper way to look for guidance in city manners, matters. Comparing what is happening with other cities to Hampton is not the answer. There are too many variables. For example, Des Moines has an animal care and control division along with 373 sworn officers and 105 civilian. seventy-three sworn officers and a hundred and five civilian support staff. Ankeny, Iowa, does not employ its own animal control officers. Instead, it contracts the Animal Rescue League of Iowa for animal control services. The Animal Rescue League is Iowa's largest nonprofit animal shelter in the state. In Davenport, animal control services are contracted out to the Humane Society of Scott County. There's so many variables, I think Jim really strayed from his format, and I was disappointed in his article, and I just felt it should be in the letter to the editor, not in Code Counsel. So, that's what I had to say.
Thank you. Mr. Lamos?
I just hope that, uh, when people leave here tonight, they understand that we're all working for Hampton, and there's a lot of apathy, you know? No one's running against me, so, uh, there's plenty of opportunities for people to step forward and, and serve the community. So, you know, my previous statement said we have to work through the process, and that's what we're doing. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Palmer?
On a lighter note, um, uh, Sunday, November second is my birthday, and please, no, no gifts. But I, every year, I use my Facebook page, 'cause they put up this fundraiser for your birthday, deal every year for your birthday, you can have that option. So every year, I use my Facebook page, three thousand or so friends and fans and whoever is on there to help raise money for something around the area. I've raised money for the, uh, the flights, compassion flights in the cemetery and, and, we got a kitten from the pet hut, or the cat hut in Webster City, I raised some money there. And I, I did hear from the, I, I've been kinda talking with some people at the Senior Center, and so this year, I'm using my fundraiser, uh, page to raise money for the Hampton Senior Center. So if you venture to my Facebook page, if I haven't blocked you yet, um, uh, there's a click there, and you click and you PayPal, and, um, I've set a goal for fifteen hundred dollars. They need a new computer, uh, they have, they have water bills, they have phone bills, they have other bills, just like everybody else does, and so, um, you can donate to that through November ninth. And so, if you don't wanna donate through me, run a check up to the Senior Center and, uh, and give it to them. They'd, they'd really, really appreciate that. Of course, they sell yearly memberships as well, but, um, I think right now we're at about, just about three hundred bucks, and so, anyway, if, if people would do that, that'd be great. Like I said, the goal is, is fifteen hundred, and, uh, they'd certainly take more than that, but anyway, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Greifey?
I've just spent a lot of time reading about chickens. And I'm gonna continue working on that. I, I do want chicken owners to understand that we are not working against you. That is not the goal. The goal is to keep things under control, to be able to work together. You know, it's, it's hurtful when you step up to the podium and you're very defensive right off the bat. It's, it's very difficult, 'cause we have spent a lot of time in this, all of us, and we do wanna work with you. We do wanna make it better. But on the other hand, we also have to do what's in the best interest of the community as a whole. So hopefully, we can make some progress and come up with some good plans here with this.
All right, thank you. Ms. Rhodey?
I don't have anything tonight.
Nothing. Okay. That comes to me. Uh, I did put some, put some notes together that I wanna share with everybody. Uh, this is on the, uh, working together, um, through the, through the, our, our most recent, uh, issue. You know, we, we, we came, give and take, and some people got a little upset, and, you know, it just, you know, that's kinda things how, how it works. But let me just go through this. Uh, we've had our share of discussions with the council lately, as we should. Um, discussions are an important part of coming to consensus on any given issue. I listen to your thoughts and my suggestions and, and, and consider them, along with everything that I research, when I make my decisions on how I view each situation. If you disagree with, with, if I disagree with you on someone, it doesn't mean, on something, it doesn't mean that I don't respect you as a member of our community, community. Uh, it just nee, it means that I have a different viewpoint on a topic than you do. And that's okay. I respect everyone as a, as a human being. I always have, and I always will. Jerry brought the leadership statement that we share, um, back, uh, when was it, last year, from the, from the convention. I think Urbandale was using them, and so we tweaked a little bit, and I added it in because I thought, I really believe in this stuff, and I think it really, I believe in what it ma, what it says. And just to real, really quickly run through it again, uh, the City of Hampton endeavors at all times to promote and model the principles of professionalism. It has trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. In conducting this evening's meeting, we accept all, we expect all participants to add, act in that manner, consistent with those principles. In short, what that means to me is that I should treat everybody the same every day. They're the same person they are tomorrow, um, I should, I should treat them the same way every time I see them. Stop and think when I'm about to speak with somebody. Make sure that my, you know, my tone is where it belongs. If, if, if I, if I'm heated about something, maybe it's time to step away, you know, sometimes. Treat them with, with respect, even if I disagree what they're saying. We have city, six city council members, a mayor, a city manager, a public works director, a police chief, a police, police department, city staff, and people in the community. There are going to be different, differing opinions. That there's no way around it. But we are a team, and together we, we, we will accomplish many team, many things. And I put the people from Hampton on the team, because they're a big part of our team, whether we know it or not. You know, we're not just sitting up here trying to make, uh, make decisions for them whether, if we don't get any input from them. So, so they are part of the team. And to close it, I just wanna say, appreciate the time and effort that everybody contributes to our discussions and our successes. Thank you. I'm not done. I got one more, a couple more things. On another lighter note, about Mr. Palmer, um, has anybody gone by the city parking lot over here two blocks lately? A couple of years ago, or maybe a year and a half ago, we were having trouble, we had cars being left there for months and months. I went by the other day and I looked over there and, I mean, there's actually room to park. It looks great. The PD is in a great time, great job getting that cleaned up, and it's something to be proud of. And the only other thing I got is, has it been, been by Hardee's lately? They edged their sidewalk, they worked on their curb, even the, the vacant lot, lot to the east of them, they did a whole sidewalk, and I'll tell you what, it looks pretty good when you come by there now. And it's, it's getting pretty grow, pretty worn, grown, grown, grown over, and I see it, and it bothers me, 'cause I, I like to have a nice yard, but, uh, but so there's little things happening out here, and I just wanna make sure everybody sees them. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this regular session of the City, Hampton City Council.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Lamos, second by Ms. Rhodey. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Readjourned. Uh, Skoll, Vikings play tonight, so, let's go. Thank you.